We're calling the regular council meeting to order for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. It is 6:31. Ms. Monroe, if you'd like to call the roll.
Here, Don Barnard.
Here.
Tiffany Hollis.
Here.
Ryan Green.
Here.
Dave Seelin.
Here.
Jeff Barr.
Present.
Wes Cobal.
Here.
Aborsini.
Here.
If we could please stand, Mr. Wes Cobal is going to lead us in invocation and then we'll introduce the girls for the pledge of allegiance.
Good Father, thank you for giving us this opportunity to gather together. Thank you for your many blessings, the blessing upon this great nation, this great community. Please be with those that may be experiencing any type of heartache or sorrow at the moment. Please be with them and give them all the guidance and wisdoms they do seek. In your name I pray, amen.
So tonight we have the Girl Scouts here and they're going to lead us in the pledge. And we have Evelyn, Adely, Morgan, Macy, Danny, Mike?
Michaela.
Michaela and Peyton. So the flag's over here, girls. If you guys want to lead us, then we'll follow you in the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And what troop are you?
7646.
7646. And who are your leaders?
Mom and Dad.
Do you guys want to turn around and get a picture while you're up here?
Those cameras shoot wide, fellas.
Can I get in with them? I know some of them. I'd like to join them.
You're in the picture. You're in the picture guaranteed. Just make sure you're smiling.
Mr. Seelin, of course. Right here, I'll get on the end there. Open the end caps. You guys squeeze. There we go.
The thorns between roses. The rose between thorns.
Great job, girls. Thank you.
Don't forget to check out that YouTube video. That's the only reason I got up there.
City lie.
Okay, item number five is approval of agenda. Does anyone have any changes or additions to the agenda that we have at this point? Hearing none, what is the will of council?
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Are all in favor?
So tonight we have some mayor proclamations. This is one of the favorite things of council. The first tonight is Mr. Seelin is going to read the proclamation. If Ms. Clark could come up front.
Front and center.
All right, so, Mrs. Clark. Whereas the city of Johnstown, whereas the city of Johnstown Council would like to recognize and congratulate Johnstown Intermediate School teacher Lori Clark for receiving the 2024-25 Licking County Foundation Leaders for Learning Award. And whereas Lori Clark graduated from Saginaw Valley State University and is married to her husband Alan and have three children, Nathan married to Allie, Nate, Daniel, and Luke. And whereas Lori Clark has been teaching for 19 years, currently she teaches fourth grade and is caring, dedicated educator who always puts her students first and works tirelessly to ensure that she makes lessons engaging and fun for her students. And whereas, Mrs. Clark leads the Sunshine Committee and also is doing things to support the staff and make Johnstown Intermediate a great place to work. And whereas, the Leaders for Learning Award was created to promote excellence in public education and honor exemplary teachers in our county. And whereas Lori Clark was identified and recognized as a teacher who exemplifies excellence in teaching. And now therefore, Mayor Don Barnard and on behalf of Johnstown City Council do hereby call on our community to congratulate Lori Clark on receiving this award for her outstanding work in the Johnstown Monroe School system. She brings tremendous pride to the schools and to the Johnstown community.
I want to know why she wasn't listed as a 1989 Johnstown High School graduate. Pride and joy of the Johnny.
She redlined it.
Okay, we have one more proclamation. This one is very near and dear to my heart. I'd like to call Ms. Hausler's first grade class. Kids that are here tonight, I think there's a few of you. Is there a Noah here? Where is Noah? You are the rock star of her. Okay, if Ms. Danielle Dean Hausler could come forward, please. It is with great pleasure, whereas the city of Johnstown Council would like to recognize and congratulate Johnstown Elementary School teacher Danielle Dean Hausler for receiving the 2025 Call It A New Make A Difference Award. And whereas Danielle Hausler grew up in Columbus, Ohio, went to Buckeye Valley High School, and then on Otterbonne University, she married her high school sweetheart, Zat. I didn't think he was a sweetheart, but. And has two children, Emma from Johnstown Middle School and Kale from Johnstown Elementary School. And whereas Ms. Hausler has been teaching for 14 years, all in the first grade, she is a caring, dedicated educator who gives her all to make a difference in every student's life. She models kindness in all her instructions or interactions. And whereas the You Make A Difference Award recognizes parents, students, community members, educators, and school staff members from regular or special education who are involved with children with special needs who demonstrate outstanding contributions above and beyond their roles. And whereas Danielle Hausler received the award for going above and beyond in her work with student Noah Mooney for Select Mutism, who nominated her for the award. And now therefore, I, Mayor Donald Barnard, on behalf of the Johnstown City Council, do hereby call on our community to congratulate Danielle Dean Hausler on receiving this award for her outstanding work in the Johnstown Monroe School system. She brings tremendous pride to the schools and to the Johnstown community. Noah, could you give us your?
Megan wants to know if we're on YouTube also.
First grade.
We'll get it.
Clean up.
A little foliage.
I apologize. This one was very special for me. Ms. Hausler teaches my daughter. She's done a tremendous job. So thank you. Next on the comments tonight, assistance comments on matters not on the agenda. And if you guys, if you guys want to leave, you don't have to stay any longer. This is where it gets long and boring. So.
Kale, don't drop that. That's a total. Figured with the numbers, it was either really good or really bad. I was figuring with the numbers.
Half full. Today.
That's good.
So far.
I'm glad to see we're getting, some of those teachers are getting recognized because lots of the teachers in the schools have done a great job with all the kids.
Okay. Next on the agenda, assistance comments on matters on the agenda. Ms. Monroe, did you receive any comments on matters? Correspondence, correspondence response. We have correspondence between Mr. Jim Blair. Do you want me to read this or is it?
It's a lot to read aloud.
Yes.
Can we do that in conjunction with the, with the other piece?
We can.
Member that's part of the packet and people can download it and look at it if they need it.
Yeah.
You don't have to read it.
Yeah, we don't need to read it. Okay. Council committee reports, planning zoning, the 3/25 meeting was canceled. Their next is April 8th at 6:30 in council chambers. Design review board met March 25th. Their next is January, or April 8th at 5:00 p.m. in council chambers. Ms. Monroe, was there anything to report from that one?
I'm sure there is, but I was absent on vacation, so I let Sean do it.
All right. I'll fill in real quick. We're talking about design review, is that it?
Yes.
Great. So the board reviewed TSC. They're doing a, call it a garden area. They kind of already have a fenced-in area. They wanted to do some modifications of that to make it more pedestrian and retail friendly. So they're proposing to do an additional canopy, move some things around, reconfigure. Also, they are wanting to do some paint and things like that along the building. So the board approved that with, with a list of provisions to be included in it. If you want more information on that, feel free to reach out. Or when Teresa has the minutes done, you can leaf through that. Mystic mutts and groovy grooms is a new business. They had a sign permit application that went before the board. They made some slight modifications to that as well, and that was approved. And both of these items will likely get started here. TSC, obviously, will take a little bit longer, but the new sign will be probably up here shortly.
Do they have a date set for their steering committee yet? For the next meeting for their steering committee?
For the design review, not at this time. Still waiting. I think Trevor's heads down on a lot of the, the work, the detailed part of it, so.
Just want to make sure we're ahead of that to advertise to the public.
Yeah. Nope, haven't gotten any correspondence back from MKSK on that. I'm sure they'll circulate something. They're usually pretty good about it. So we got the bone skeleton structure. Now they're just trying to put some flesh on it. So it takes a little longer for those things.
Safety and service met tonight. Their next meeting is May 7th at 5:30. Anything to report from that meeting tonight?
Great meeting tonight. We went ahead and talked about potential sidewalk replacement study there, north and south Main Street. Talked about the potholes and a strategy to repair those throughout the city, potential paving projects, an ROPWC, and the long saga of the Clark Drive traffic signal. Looks like it's come to a close. So there, Kroger, everybody should see that light working properly. And it looks like it came in under budget, which is always nice.
Okay, finance meets again on April 15th at 5:30 in council chambers. Director reports received, the service department reports for water, sewer, and street. Does anyone have any questions on those three?
Okay. My only question is, is there anything in there that you want to highlight? Meaning telling a good story about yourselves?
Well, the only thing that I would say is within, or of course you see their normal and everyday duties that they're doing in there. And you have a very good crew and they're doing a great job for you.
Thank you, Jack. Any other questions?
Jack. For our 24-25 snow season, the 528 tons of salt, is that kind of within our parameters that we've been using the past couple of years?
No, we used about double the amount of salt, but of course, this is the first year that we've been selling State Route 62 and State Route 37. So we knew this was going to be a learning curve for us. And I do have a slight concern because although it was very, very cold, we didn't have many days of heavy snow. So learning from this, I think our budget moving into next year, I may increase that amount of salt for availability to purchase. Now, if we would ever overbuy one year, we can store it and purchase next or less the following year. But that is in the, all the time I've been here taking care of street, that is the second most usage of salt we've, we've had.
How much do we have on hand right now?
On hand right now, we've probably got about 400 ton. Our building will hold easily 800 ton. And I have purchased all the salt within our contract. Now, salt had went down in price. We're paying about $7 a ton delivered. I actually was, we have a little bit of money left in our budget for salt for 2024. We kept those POs open to purchase. I was going to call Cardale to see if I could get any more salt at that price. Because there was more salt used this year, probably next year's allotments of salt will be, will cost more per ton because more salt is used and the stockpile has been reduced. So I've, I've got some more checking. I can order salt clear up till May 1st. But also in May, I will have to order salt for the 2025-2026 season. So I gotta pull that together. I was working on the date a little bit to see what money we have left. Because I do have a fear the price of salt will go up because of the more usage this last season.
Any questions?
It's not so much a question as it is a, an ask and a friendly recommendation is that, I asked that specific question about the tons because I knew it was more than normal. Those would be things that, I mean, you could put it in text, you know, an asterisk, hey, this is kind of double because of. It's a quick explanation. On this one, sharing it in public also allows those that are listening in person or on our live stream, they're, they're hearing this information as to why our salt usage went up. I think those are bits of information that not just council, but our citizenry, think about some of those things when we have those reports. If there's a, this time it'll be a one-off, but come next year, it'll be a normal thing. So you won't say the same thing. But I'm, I'm trying to give it in general, generalities that, that all of our director reports. I would like to see, if possible, not to stretch the truth or embellish, but if there's something to highlight in there, that each one of those directory reports have that so we can share it as we're live streaming. Those that are listening will hear it and, and they may have learned something that they did not know before of our operations and our staff and what they do.
Anybody else?
Hopefully that makes sense.
I got it.
Thank you.
Jack, if you'd like to go over the highlights of your service director report?
Yes, we have a few things I want to discuss. Item number one, new water plant update. The city approved our city manager to work to enter into agreement with the guaranteed maximum price for the water plant upgrade. So if there are many questions on that, of course, I would turn that over to Sean unless there's actual questions on the plant bill to me. But we do have the GMP. On the wastewater plant update, we're continuing meetings with Jacobs for the new plant design. And also, we are working to prepare a ETI. Our new permit requires us to go into some phosphorus removal. And so we'll have to add a piece of equipment and add some chemical usage to our chemical budget. So making you aware that I'm working with Jacobs for that supplemental to the EPA. Item number four, source water assessment. We've been, you've seen this on here for a number of time. Number of times the draft has been completed and looks very good. And we are now sending that into the EPA for their review of our source water assessment. Basically, that is a one-year and a five-year protection area. As we pump water out of the ground, any contaminants will be pulled toward the plant. So we have identified those source water problems or possible problems. And this is something that the EPA requires that we have. And it's a living document. We'll have to update it every year as we check the different constituents in the water. Item number five, we completed the leak assessment in Concord Crossing East. There were no leaks to be found in Concord Crossing East. Those leak correlators have now been moved over into Concord Crossing West. So as we did last year, we're going to go from development by development, moving those leak indication equipment to see if we can find any possible loss of water. Again, item number nine, again, we're skipping a few, but item, item number nine, the Clark light has been repaired, all except for the backup unit, which I made you aware two meetings ago, which still is not in. But when it's in, we'll get those installed by MP Dory. And the last item I wanted to bring up is item number 10, the water plant applied to the EPA for a $20,000 grant to do an extensive water loss audit. As we have worked with our new leak detection equipment and eliminated a number of leaks, we now want to see where we're at as far as a percentage of loss. What happens with this grant is they will check our pumpage. We work with an engineer on this. They will, they will check our pumpage. They will check our meters. They will compare that against the billing system and also look into our distribution system to see if there are any other places that we can find water loss. The national average is 15% water loss in water plants and water systems, whereas our goal is to be below that. So now that we have the contract in hand from the EPA to receive this grant with the managers and council permission, I would like to send that contract over to our attorneys just so they can give it the ones over before it's signed. Now, it is an EPA contract, so they send out many, many of these for people who are receiving grants. But I still think it's good practice for them to look at it before I sign it and send it out and get started on this project. And, are there any questions?
Anyone? Okay, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
We have no table legislation. Public hearings of legislation. Our first is ordinance 03-2025 and ordinance to amend section 1159 of the city's codified ordinances. This came to us from zoning, correctional?
Correct.
Okay, if you'd like to explain it?
Sure. Get all my notes ready, in case you have questions, which I would assume you will. And I will try to, I'm already going to warn you, I'm not going to do as good a job as Trevor. But Trevor was not able to join us tonight and he has a conflict for our next meeting as well. But with that said. he is more than willing to fill in any gaps if we do have an additional question or two or three or a multitude of them before the next meeting, we can certainly engage him for this and try to get any of those questions answered. So with this, I'll tee it up just real gently and then go through the staff report that Trevor prepared. Try to hit the highlight reel and then also fill in some additional blanks since his first staff report went out to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So just to real quickly introduce this, this is an ordinance to amend the section city's codified ordinance, which we're seeing as a text amendment. In our codified ordinances, under certain districts, we have permitted uses and those permitted uses obviously obligate the city to allow particular industries to locate or not locate. In this particular case, manufacturing. Housing also has its own set of permitted requirements as well. So we had an applicant reach out to the city inquiring about a particular parcel. And we notified them that that particular use is not permitted at this particular moment. But there is an avenue and a methodology in which they can submit for the council to consider. It obviously goes before zoning for recommendation, but then the council to consider allowing this to be a permitted use in that particular district. And then they would obviously be able to locate in that district. Without this, they would not be able to locate in that particular district and do the manufacturing that they're proposing. So they opted to go through this process. They were aware that it was a rather lengthy process, but not too lengthy. We gave them a pretty good roadmap for the process and how quickly that can be or how slow it can take. So far, it's been rather simplified and streamlined up to this point. It did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and they reviewed it and gave a recommendation to council that this particular application with some conditions that Trevor has put in here be approved by council. So without further ado, I'll go through Trevor's staff report here. I think I've teed up the how we got here. Just a little bit of background into what we're doing. When we're looking at changing a use, it's not for a specific parcel, but rather it would apply to the entirety of the light manufacturing zoning district. And if approved, would expand the allowable uses on all properties within the district. I want to point that out just because when we're looking at this in any other applicable situation, oftentimes they look at it very site-specific. This is going to be for my site, but in reality, this has far-reaching consequences past the property lines of this particular parcel and would be an allowable use amongst all of the LM district. It does have a comprehensive review plan that Trevor has went through. You all have this in your packet. I believe it went out a little bit late, so apologize for that. However, if you do have questions, you will not be voting on this until the next council meeting, so feel free to reach out. But generally speaking, the comprehensive plan has an expansion. Let me just read from Trevor's. While the general expansion of allowable uses within the light manufacturing zoning district is inconsistent with the downtown village residential and suburban residential land use designations as proposed in the applications, conditions for the use could be applied to limit within the light manufacturing zoning district, the uses which may be allowed. So I read that because Trevor stated that there could be conditions put on here that would obviously limit. And Trevor did in his recommendation, put in conditions and those conditions were also looked at by the zoning and planning and zoning commission. And they felt that they should be included in it. So the text that you'll see tonight does have those conditions that Trevor was speaking about in the comprehensive plan. Moving along. Analysis of the proposed use, what they're looking to do is a paint and powder coating manufacturing. We use the NACS code when looking to find the permitted use that would be most applicable to this particular manufacturing industry. This use will include the manufacturing of paint and powder coating products from raw material. So the first question we had is, are they going to be doing powder coating and painting there? This is the production of painting and powder coating material. So just for clarification, oftentimes when it comes across, they think there's going to be that actual process happening there where they're applying it to things. This, from what we're seeing, paint and powder coating manufacturing. Code amendment criteria for review. This is the part where you all want to take special interest and there's five criteria that you should review when assessing whether this is a practical use that should be allowed or not. And I'll go quickly through these. First one up is relation of the amendment to the public health and safety and general welfare. Trevor went through this and gave you kind of a Reader's Digest view of what he saw. So he kind of did some of the work for you. Impacts to general welfare. General welfare are more difficult to quantify based on the information provided with the application. The proposed changes would impact a total of 175 parcels, totaling more than 390 acres. Again, that goes back to that first piece that we touched on, more than this parcel. However, he does not expect this to have substantial health and safety issues. So in his review, he did not see that. He did touch on traffic, but we'll leave that for section C, more applicable there. Item B, compatibility of the proposed amendment to adjacent land uses, adjacent zoning and appropriate plans for the area. Adoption of the proposed amendment as presented has the potential to allow industrial uses in the area intended to be focused on residential uses or pedestrian-focused environment. So I'll reword this here so that we can better understand it. By expanding the uses, it does allow for the ability of the light manufacturing district to have the potential for more for more opportunities for industries under this to locate in that area. And what he's referencing, and I'm going to do a throwback to the comprehensive plan, in our comprehensive plan, what currently is in our light manufacturing district leans to different uses in the future. So some of those are suburban, I'm sorry, residential. Some of those are downtown. And so what Trevor's simply stating here is in those areas outside the comprehensive plan that you're not necessarily wanting to see light manufacturing, this has the ability to allow that. But again, he kind of leans into some of the conditions and we'll cover those at the very end here that can mitigate the sprawl of that light manufacturing district into those areas that you've identified in your comprehensive plan that you may not particularly want that. C, and maybe this is probably going to be the most hot topic, effects and proposed amendment on the access and traffic flow. This one was was discussed in great detail the last time an application came before us. There was a much broader much broader brush that was involved with the last application that came before you. With that broadness, allowed for allowed for a variety of uses which could have traffic flows that could be as impactful as this, less impactful or considerably higher. So with that being said, when we looked at the traffic flow, we know that the congestion at 62 and 37 is a big pinch point. And that needs to be digested fully before we obviously start to change uses that would obviously impact that. Is that's a pretty heavily traversed roadway from our residents here on a daily basis. And the last thing we want to do is negatively impact them within reason. Obviously, the economic benefits of this are positive, but at the sacrifice of their commuting experience and as well as the school trying to get from A to B and our fire and EMS and all the other varieties of things. So we'll cover this real quick. In 2030, whenever the full volume of trucks is built out, they're looking to have 2.2 trucks per day. So as you can do some guesstimations, 2.2 trucks per day is going to be a minimal impact probably on what we're seeing in the downtown area. As far as employment, I believe Mr. Barr raised this question or concern the last time. This particular employment, and they've submitted these to the state of Ohio, 48. So, and there's three shifts. So those employment numbers and car traffic numbers are going to be split over a variety of time. So this particular industry is going to have probably a minimal impact on the traffic that's currently in that intersection. And then if you were to extrapolate that and say hypothetically, all the land over there is now being used as paint, powder coating and paint manufacturing, which is kind of the exercise you want to do. It's not probable, but it's possible that that would be the situation. What kind of impact would that have? Times it by four, you could have eight trucks per day. Traffic-wise vehicular traffic, 48 employees. Times that by four over a three-shift period, you can do the math on that. Doesn't seem to have a tremendous impact to the traffic pattern in that area. So I think what we're looking at here is a situation that fits with with the current restrictions of that particular area. And I'll open up to any questions at the end. That one may be something we need to come back to. Relationship of topography used or intended, I'm not even going to go through this relatively flat. You don't see any hills or anything like that. So that one Trevor lightly walked through. Relationship of proposed use to the adequacy of available services and to the general expansion plans. So what we look at here is what Jack pointed out a little bit earlier, I believe in the Safety and Service Committee meeting, was gallons per day. So we have vetted this with the applicant, made sure that we have these numbers. We don't obviously want to take on an industry that's going to consume a tremendous amount of water to the detriment of any other expansion needs that we may have. So with this particular applicant, they are putting down that they'll at peak be 434 gallons per day in 2030. So I think that's 13,000 gallons per month. Rather minimal impact. And it has been mentioned to them that we will be reviewing any type of discharge into our sewer. And if necessary, they will be required to do a pre-treatment process. So they have been fully made aware of that as we march through this process. If we need to get to that at a later date, if this does get approved, then we'll certainly walk through that exercise prior to prior to them discharging anything into our particular sewer. So finally, the conclusion, reviews, comments, and recommends the following conditions be placed on the use if the city desires to amend the allowable uses within those light manufacturing zoning district. So the first piece of it, obviously F, paint and powder coating manufacturing. The four additional items that Trevor placed in here is this use shall be located on a parcel of not less than 15 acres. As I mentioned before, when we were looking at the comprehensive plan, there's areas that are zone light manufacturing that actually have housing on it currently. And in the comprehensive plan, those particular areas lean into being established as housing and not expanding the light manufacturing. So the reason Trevor put this 15 acre in there, you would have to cobble all of those houses together, which is not probable. So what he's trying to do here is still defend against your comprehensive plan in the future and the residential area that you are wanting to see have the availability and the existence that you're wanting. Any outdoor storage tanks shall be located behind the front plane of the building and shall be screened by an opaque fence or wall. This is just something he wanted to add, felt more comfortable with from an aesthetics. No portion of the facility associated storage areas or any circulation of parking areas shall be a minimum of 100 feet from any property lines abutting adjacent residential use. So we do have some residential pieces over there. We wanted to make sure we had some additional parameters in here. Not only for this particular parcel, obviously this is starting to look a little bit more deeply into that specific parcel, but any other parcel that could be utilized for light manufacturing, powder coat, paint manufacturing, it would have to have a provision in there if it was adjacent to a residential use. All activities related to the manufacturing and packaging of materials shall be conducted within an enclosed facility. Goods may be stored outdoors in a designated area meeting the requirements of subsection two above. So I just went through a lengthy staff report. Apologize, Trevor probably would have hit that a heck of a lot better and more condensed and confined. At this point, I think I've covered the traffic, the water. There has been some correspondence that we've received from a resident. And then there's also the reply letter from the particular company to hopefully answer those questions that were brought up by the resident. And at that point, I'm not going to read through the letter or the reply. But if you do have questions related to it, certainly here to try to fill in any blanks or fill in any blanks from the zoning staff report. Sorry it took so long. Changing your text amendment is a big deal, so I like to go through this process pretty extensively, especially if we're going to recommend that you are doing it because of the implications it could have. And this is just part of the process. So it is a little bit lengthier process. It's not like a typical ordinance situation. Has a heck of a lot more public notice that goes into it. You're establishing by right, somebody, the ability to do something. So it's kind of a long explanation. At that point, we do have a representative. Ryan is here, not necessarily with the company. I'll let Ryan introduce himself. If you want to have Ryan come up at this point, you certainly can. Or if you have questions that you want to internally ask prior to having Ryan engage and Ryan doesn't have to speak at all if you prefer, so.
Does anyone have questions? First of all?
I got a question. It's more about the general comment statement, if you will, with the traffic, with the pinch points of existing. I am not, because I don't travel that way much during the heavy traffic loads, but could you give a short version of that timeframe and the specifics of, are they getting, is the traffic getting backed up at the traffic light at Commerce? Or is it getting backed up all the way from the 62-37 intersection? Could you shed a little light on that?
Absolutely. So I will tell you all the above. I would say coming out of Commerce, there's not traditionally a line. It's the pinch point is getting on the 62. And then 62, then the pinch point there is 37. That 37-62 intersection obviously is an issue. So most of the employment, most of the trucking related to anything back there is going to need to traverse through that intersection. So the more traffic you're putting into that intersection, the more congested and the more problematic it's going to be. I would say that everyone is aware that 62 and 37 in the evening has a tremendous backup in the morning, has a tremendous backup as well. Whether you're on 37 or 62, 62 obviously being the high load of the traffic, 37 being the lighter of those, but it does obviously have some constraints in that area. So one thing we really wanted to consider if we are going to allow a permitted use in there, and I'll give you some examples. Left my notes over at the office next door, so I'm going to go from memory, but I think in the last proposal, it had warehouses, distribution, office. If you were to have an office, which would be, you know, fantastic from a payroll situation, you would potentially have, you know, hundreds of employees. And for back reference, 31 gifts when they were actually located in the facility had somewhere between, I believe, 300 employees circulating in and out of there at one point. And then obviously the amount of truck traffic associated that with that particular use was a lot higher. That created a need for the Commerce light to go in, but it also created a larger issue in the downtown. At one point, we had cops directing traffic on 62 near Commerce. We looked at additional roadways that could be introduced into the Commerce Park to alleviate their need to go through the 62 intersection. So when you ask the question, I would tell you that 37 and 62 is the problem area. Just for your awareness, and we've mentioned it in the past, did receive a million-dollar study that's currently going on just to figure out some short-term, medium-term and long-term solutions to that. Again, council has also stated that they don't want 62 to be a major thoroughfare. So even if it could be engineered in a way that says, great, you can get 500,000 more cars through here on a monthly basis. You have said this is a part of our downtown, a part of our fabric. We want it to be pedestrian-friendly. So whatever solution you come up with, ODOT, state of Ohio county, all the players involved, it needs to be a balance between obviously our historic downtown and pedestrian way of life that exists there and not just a superhighway that kind of tears apart the fabric of that potential downtown. So all those things are considered into this, weighing those out, looking at the current uses that are allowed out there, establishing a couple more, the potential for a new industry to be located there. What's the impacts on traffic? I believe in the comprehensive plan. I believe in the comprehensive plan, it stated the types of industry we should be encouraging out there is high payroll, low-traffic type of employment centers. I think this is probably consistent with that. I believe the last time we had this conversation, hourly pay, they were looking at something along the lines of thirty dollars an hour, which is not huge money, but certainly higher than the typical manufacturing, distribution, warehouse jobs that are in the surrounding region. I think they're seventeen, sixteen, twenty dollars an hour. So this is going to have some higher impact as far as wages are concerned. Giving you a long, long explanation, I'll stop.
Any other questions for councilman?
Sean, I see here in A, it's noted that there is nothing to be, considered to be a threat to the public health or safety. I'm just curious with this manufacturing, does this create any type of smell that's going to wave over the community when it's flowing? Or do you have any idea about something like that?
That is a great question.
They do answer it in their memo on the third page of the packet, at the very beginning of our packet. It says regarding odors, we understand the importance of maintaining a pleasant environment for the community. Our protection process for powder paint and waterborne materials are designed to minimize any potential odors. We will implement stringent controls and monitoring, sure that any emissions are within acceptable limits and not cause discomfort to the residents of Johnstown.
I can appreciate their stance on that.
I try to take issue though.
As would be my stance as a business owner, I would take the same, that we're going to operate within the guidelines and foundations of the law. But my question on this was going to be under the heading of water sewer runoff, air quality. I mean, we have housing that is very close to there and prevailing winds will push it over that housing that is very close to there. So we have other businesses that are currently in that light manufacturing district that also have fumes and things that come off of that and do currently impact housing in the area. So and as much as I appreciate EPA government guidelines and a business wanting to do the best that the business can, I want to make sure from our standpoint that we are taking a look at this. And as things come down the road, we get years into this and see the actual product beginning to come out of there and we coexist together, I want to make sure that we're able to work together to get the best case out of this. And if there is things that need to be implemented later from an enforcement standpoint, that we have the ability to do so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Power coating unto itself is typically relatively safe. Of course, if you eat a bunch of it or jump in a barrel, it's probably not good. But the hardeners that they put in it can be potentially toxic. And they don't outline any detail what they're actually going to make, what it is. I can read you the triglyceridyl osicyrate tri-metallic anhydride. These are not good substances to breathe in. So not understanding, and they're probably, they don't understand the EPA standards, not understanding how they're going to monitor, not understanding who's going to check it to make sure that it's actually operating. The noise, yes. The traffic, yes, important. To me, a poof of potentially dangerous inhalants blanking the town concerns me. I have no reason to think it will happen, but I also have no assurances it won't happen. So I would really like to see in here, in this allowable use, some monitoring system, some type of system that we can look at the citizen and say, yes, we know there's potential, but we are, this is how we're managing that and monitoring it. And it's probably all there. They just probably say, tell us how there's, I don't know, sensing system, which I don't know. But I need to feel confident that the citizens don't have any danger posed to them and the noise and the other, those things are, they're real, but to me, safety is paramount. So I would like to see that. And never do they say they won't do the other processes that have been troublesome in other environments under other ownership that they have no intention to. That's kind of important to me because especially since it's not, I mean, they may be a great corporate partner, a great partner to the community, but if we allow that, the next person, or the next person, or thirty years from now, the next person, they decide we can do whatever we want and the houses get more compact, there's a bigger neighborhood, and all of a sudden, we've got someone making resin, which is extremely dangerous, can be, and not understanding the protections and the processes and the regulation behind it. That's what I'd like to hear a lot more about before I can support it.
Great questions.
Sir, would you like to come up at all and address anything?
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Scribner and I am with the Montrose Group. We are an economic development consulting firm. And in this circumstance, we've been engaged by One Columbus, which is your regional economic development organization serving this community to help facilitate the zoning text amendment application in concert with the existing property owner to the benefit of the company that we're talking about now that intends to occupy the vacant industrial building and go about their business of, again, manufacturing those products we've just finished discussing. I want to start with a couple of thank yous real quickly and then I'll take a moment to address a couple of the questions. Number one, thank you to Sean and to his staff and your planner, very helpful in facilitating process. And I'll say the same for your zoning commission, your zoning board. We do this all over Ohio and outside of Ohio and a meeting that was very well-run, very professional, asked a lot of very good and very challenging questions there as well. So a lot of respect for the process and appreciation for the help to get to this point. I'd also add that I always put myself in your seat as well when we're in a process like this. And again, very fair questions and concerns yet this evening. I'm in the role of liaison here. So what I will commit to you is to take some of these questions, the request for additional specificity around processes and safety protocols around the chemicals that they may or may not have on site and just their general approach to dealing with hazmat materials, certainly the sensitivities to any potential impacts that their processes may have on the residential areas. I will say this though, this was a competitive project and where the company evaluated a lot of locations, other states, other areas. And whether it be concerns about traffic or impacts or negative interaction with the community, they don't want that any more than you guys do. So that's not enough for you to take to the bank and go ahead and vote yes tonight to approve this, but they've been through a vetting process of their own and they want to feel comfortable that what they're going to be doing is not going to be a square peg in a round hole and that there isn't going to create a situation where you all are uncomfortable and if you're uncomfortable, they're going to be uncomfortable. So I'm confident we can come back with some additional detail perhaps for the next meeting or in advance of that in a memo perhaps to speak to that. And again, just appreciate process to date and hopefully we can get to a point where you are comfortable with the change and make the requisite change to the zoning text so they can move forward and start some good new jobs to the community, absorb a vacant building, which are never good for any community, and add to the tax base and provide some good employment opportunities for your residents. So if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them and speak to them and we'll follow up through Sean with additional information for all of you.
Anybody else have any extra questions for?
One question that I have and Sean can probably help with this. So I appreciate that we're working with the right people, right? We're working with the state, the region, Ohio means jobs, Morpsey, all the above. And they're taking a look at us, they're bringing successful businesses here and that's great, that's what we want. We have a business park that we want to make even more business accessible, but we just want to make sure that they're taking a look at everything. And as we're talking to them about bringing future business in, in the process chalking up to winning, right? You're going to have traffic. When you have success, you have traffic, people want to be there. I want to make sure, yes, we're talking about business with these people, but I also want to be talking about traffic solutions because if you're in our downtown area, at the right time of day, you're going to see a lot of traffic trying to fit through a bottleneck. So I think it has to be part of the conversation of when businesses move in or how do we mitigate traffic for the next one.
That's fair. The smart communities are all asking those very questions and not getting starstruck about a new opportunity, like thinking through the full impact, good, bad, and ugly. So it's a good approach.
Anybody else?
In general, some of the safety concerns that were brought up by others, is the work, is the production in there, is any of it regulated by Ohio EPA or those types of agencies for air quality, water quality?
So any emissions, that would fall under the purview of Ohio EPA and they have their own sets of protocols, procedures, protections around understanding what they may discharge into the air or the, that's all a permitted process that they're going to have to adhere to. As far as water goes, I think Sean kind of alluded to it that you have standards for your discharge and effluents. May, different uses could trigger the need for pre-treatment and whatnot. I don't think we've gotten into that yet, but the company is well-aware that they're going to have to meet a standard and not exceed it and make sure that they don't cause an undue burden or a safety issue for your treatment system.
If the amendment is made with exclusions to some of the things mentioned in here, would that cause pause for locating here?
I would say this, the amendment with the suggested conditions that's before you now, it makes sense to us in that it really minimizes the risk if this becomes a use that's pervasive across the rest of your, it kind of shoehorns it into like, this building in this spot is about the only place you're going to see this type of manufacturing happen under this text amendment change. What you've raised this evening is a couple of questions or concerns about potential odors or potential storage of hazardous materials or chemicals. I can have them speak to that, but I can't answer the question because you haven't proposed an additional specific condition or something. So if you do that, then I would have to relay that to them and find out and it could be something that's untenable with their intended use.
I guess that would be my question. Are there any exclusions that would make it kind of break the deal? And I don't expect you to answer that right now.
Yeah, well, the answer is certainly yes. I mean, at the end of the day, it's a manufacturing process. They are going to do, they intend to do just what they've described and there comes a point where that balance between making sure you're speaking to the concerns of your citizens, which should be first and foremost always, if at some point the pendulum swings in that direction to a point where they just physically can't do what they need to do, then it's, it would be a deal killer of sorts.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to summarize, Ryan, if you could take back to the company, I want to just put a wrap on all of this so that we're not missing anything. Sounds like safety concern from emissions and a toxic standpoint, just a general welfare and safety of whatever in the air or around in the water. If they could give us some background and information, a little bit more detailed than obviously what they've currently given us, but I would imagine EPA standards, all that's going to have to be involved with this. But I think council is really wanting some assurances that they're not endangering anyone that's going to be located in and around this plant. And I think that really captures it all for you all. As far as unanswered questions, it seemed to be the main focus of the attention, traffic obviously. I think it's pretty well-defined what they're doing, what it is, water. We've talked about the consumption. Obviously, we know, we'll need to get with Jack just for verification on what they say they're going to do, they do, trust but verify obviously. The really unknown question at this point, it sounds like it revolves around the, if there are any odors, if there are any toxic chemicals or anything like that, what the impacts of those would be and how they would mitigate those and if it's agreeable to council. Does that capture everyone? Okay.
The only I would have is my reservations out of lack of understanding. And I don't want to look up the EPA regulations and discover it when they can be like, here they are.
Sure.
It's very fair.
Yes.
They need to do the work and I think they're willing to. It was a long call. I now understand more about resins and water-based than I ever wanted to. Ryan, if you were on that call.
They're very responsive and I think they'll be more than happy to provide.
That's encouraging. If they're dedicated and knowledgeable with their profession, it should be an easy ask for us to get answered.
Almost to a fault. Lots of information.
Agreed. If I didn't feel like this was something that I thought they could at least give you answers to or going to be shifting around some type of shell game with you to give you a response that conformed to what they're going to do, I would have a lot more reservations. I'm not saying that it's going to meet your criteria. What I'm telling you is I think they're willing to give you as much information as you require and desire and they want to be transparent and forward with you. So obviously, trust again, but verify what they're saying. And I think what you're asking are fantastic questions and you want to be able to be responsible to the citizens. So all good stuff. Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the first reading. We'll have the second reading in two weeks.
Correct.
Tonight is the public hearing.
Hearing. So you would want to do an open to public on this particular evening?
Yes. Does the public have any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, we're going to move forward then. Introduction of legislation ordinance zero-four dash twenty-twenty-five and ordinance amending ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-twenty-four, the annual appropriation ordinance of the City of Johnstown to approve necessary changes of appropriation. So this is an amendment to our budget ordinance? If you'd like to explain this?
Sure. This is appropriating the funds that we'll be requesting for dispersment from OWDA for the water plant expansion and the wastewater plant expansion. They've started, actually, they're almost completed with that plant. It's the engineering and design. Our plan is almost reached for that. And then the wastewater, they've been active in that and are in the process of requesting the timing of requesting the funds to disperse. So it's just need to appropriate the funds to disperse.
Does anyone have any questions for Dave on this? Okay, hearing none. Does the public have any questions on ordinance oh-four dash twenty-twenty-five? Okay, we'll move forward to other business. Second reading will be that in two weeks. Correct. Other business, Bob, Jeff, or Wes?
The only thing I can think of, Sean, do we have any follow-up still? What's going on with all this Bright Speed and the mess they're continuously starting to make? And are they even some of the stuff, some of my neighbors have even asked, are they going to come back and seed and put straw down where they're creating all these holes and piles of dirt and things like that?
So I actually tasked Sean with this. We'd gotten quite a few emails about this issue. So Sean, I'll let him take over a second, but he contacted Bright Speed and the day we got the first complaints in to start finding out what would happen.
And if I can, I'll jump in at this point. Just to give you background, Bright Speed, current provider of, called telecommunications in the area. If you remember council, obviously, we went through a little bit of a push and pull with Bright Speed on whether they could expand, couldn't expand. And at the end of the day, FCC federal laws, all those good jazzy things that are involved with this, we'll call it overlay or overlapping, I think is the technical word, but they have the right to be in the right of way since they are currently in the right of way. So what they are doing is obviously putting their infrastructure within that right of way that, again, I think we questioned whether it was an absolute right. Found out that pretty substantially, we didn't have a lot of wiggle room, so since they were existing, we had to kind of abide by their request. Now, did we have had them go overhead? Some of it wanted to go overhead. I don't believe that we wanted to be, as Bob uses the terminology, I think it's a matchstick city. I think that was eight years ago that he coined that and I'll use it again. So our request was is that they go underground. And with that, they were obviously doing a lot of that through a boring. Started to hear some complaints come in, went out myself to kind of see what was happening and also reached out to Bright Speed to get some further clarification. This is something they're doing. This should not be something that the city has to manage and we should have to spend a lot of staff resource hours. And so Teresa has it on our website, I believe.
Yeah, there's public notice about the fiber installation.
Yeah, there's public notice about the fiber installation and contacts if they have any problems or if there's an update. It's under the news on our website.
So what we tried to do is create a little bit of separation between what we can do and who they should contact. Obviously, contacting the city is what a lot of residents did, and it's a great way to go about it. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of, I don't have a lot of teeth in, in my ability to, to regulate what has already been approved at a federal level in the right of way. We simply approve the right of way permits, which Jack has gone through and said, yep, it's consistent with what you said you were going to do, with what we have to let you do. So they went ahead and did that. Outside of that, if you have complaints as a resident, you're going to need to reach out to that company. Have had good correspondence with the company. They have been pretty forthcoming, and they've told us that, hey, here's a list of contacts. If you do have an issue that you're seeing, have our residents reach out to us. Specifically, that way, we're not fielding the calls from the city. I did go out and have, like I said, a review of it. I said, this, this area that you've disturbed and you've put some dirt back, is that the dirt that's going to remain? They said, maybe. I said, seems like there's a lot of rocks in there. Maybe we could do a little better job. And they said, we're just the installers. Get with the company. They'll certainly answer your question. So I reached out to the company and said, hey, I think you're going to find that there's some frustration with as it was before and what it is now. Obviously, it's, it's going to have to be seeded, grass is going to have to grow, they're not going to bring in sod to cover it up, and there is going to be a box in your front yard. That is their right to put that in people's front yards. It is in the right of way, so that we can't alleviate. But the condition in which they leave it is obviously something that, that they should keep it tidy and clean. So what they've said is, this is their first initial kind of run-through. They wanted to get some straw and seed down now, then assess it after they've kind of made the mess, come back and then add additional sod, or I'm sorry, not sod, but additional dirt, topsoil, and then do seeding if it's necessary. So they're going to kind of monitor this from a Bright Speed perspective, and then also as residents continue to have complaints, absolutely reach out to Bright Speed, let them know that, hey, we're not satisfied, we want somebody to come back out and, and re-straw, re-seed, put down new topsoil because this is, this is creating an issue in, in my particular area. So hopefully that addresses the questions that you have. That balances that between us and them.
We'll definitely try to, you know, the joint call where we follow up on them. Yeah, Leafeedale, the rocks are definitely an issue, the offset of the boxes, some of the ends of the streets and how they may or may not be servicing them might be a question that comes up.
They'll hit every house on the street.
I called into the company just because I Googled it. They came up, Johnstown, they had rates and things, and I talked to them. They're not offering service at this time, but I'm not sure when they will be. They didn't have any information either, but they did have advertisements for new service, so.
Yeah, as far as service to the area, a couple of residents had questions on whether their house would be specifically serviced, reached out directly to Bright Speed, and they, they did send an email confirming that those houses that were in question would be serviced. The box that's located obviously doesn't go through the entire street. The box is kind of the collector, so then the wires obviously ran back to the box. They don't put a box at every house, they don't put a light pole at every house. That's, that's kind of the transformer, if you will, and then houses feed into that. So if anybody has questions, you know, there's not a box in my front yard, am I not going to get serviced? The box is considered kind of the hub, and then they'll do wires as services requested to that box and cut those. Usually they use a tool, Jack knows very well about it. It's kind of like a blade, cuts it in, puts it just below the surface, and then runs it over to the box. The big boring piece of it's really happening now, so. I don't know if that helps answer any availability questions or not, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few. So kind of along with that, the apartments in Leafeedale, have you heard anything new on the progress?
I did get an email, or a call, correction, recently. Going to reach back out. Sounds like they're going to start mobilizing that project again, so we'll need to connect with them. Obviously, it's been approved in the past, so as long as they hit those parameters and expectations, that's what we'll be looking for from a compliance standpoint. But we can certainly find out when those things are going to move forward. We'll obviously need to have some engineering for the inspection process available on site. So as those things start to roll in and they start moving on that project, we'll definitely be on it, I guess.
And then one thing I did have on here, there was, we're supposed to have a meeting between the city township, school group. Have we scheduled that yet?
It's scheduled for tomorrow. That's my last thing to go over with council here in a minute.
Okay. I just wanted to see what was going on there. The work session that I had asked about, do we have a date and time where we could do the work session for council?
Work session for?
Yeah, last meeting, I had talked about, you know, us going over our goals that we set last year.
That was my fault, I missed that. Okay.
Was there a time that works for everybody on that?
Can we circle back offline?
Yeah, it was my fault, I didn't send the email out.
I had that. I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have the ability to send out through any number, Teresa, of kind of like a first, second, third, I forget the name of the?
Like an availability calendar or something?
Availability calendar.
I know the way you're talking about.
I can't think of it. But, so we're not having a ton of email exchanges about, oh, I can do this date, da, 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 just that way we can kind of put it in there, then you can see, all right, here's where it is, and then set the meeting date.
Yeah, because I want to, I want to talk about that. Talk about that stuff, new JAG update, where we stand with our water and sewer. Do we have any news on any of that or anything we can talk about with that?
No.
So those are the main things. I want us to get together and talk about that because that really sets a lot for the year. Other than that, that's all I have.
Go ahead.
I absolutely concur with Councilman Green of, of getting that workshop session on there. I think, I think I'd like to find some consistency with it too, maybe not just an ad. It's not an ad hoc meeting, but it feels like an ad hoc meeting whenever we need it, but maybe develop some cadence of frequency so we can, we can plan for them, if you will, based on people's availability. And, and to tackle or to add on to what you're saying about with, with the JAG is that I, I had conversation with others sitting up here on the diocese and, you know, all of us should be inquiring, asking questions appropriately. I've asked the city manager to find ways to make sure that we're, we're informed as much as we want to be, not just in the broad sense, but also in the technical sense and implications. Not just, not, not just what we're doing, but in our surrounding western Licking County area. Because without good information, then, then a false narrative may be coming about or we make assumptions. We all know what happens with assumptions. Sorting out, you know, what is factual, what is not factual, et cetera. So I encourage that we, well, I, I encourage that we find a way that we can meet collectively and appropriately so information could be shared. If you're not able to attend those meetings, that you, as much as you want to be, reach out to Sean and ask questions, have sit-down with, he has offered his, his time to do so. I know I will be. Because it is, it is important and it, and it has a, a ton of implications of, of the, within the area. So you had other things of, of, for the workshop, Ryan, and, and one of them that we kind of talked about was, was the city manager's review. I don't know exactly where some things are at, but I think that was one of the topics we were going to discuss that is incumbent upon all of us to, again, develop cadence, expectations of how that process gets done. I, I felt like it was, I don't know if you have anything to update on that. I felt like there was some homework you were working on, Wes.
Yes.
But I don't, I don't know if anything ha- I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but the workshop meeting would be relevant to, this is what we're going to do in the sense of when and how our, our city manager position annual review is done.
Yeah, we started a lot of things last year, and I just want to, I want to know where we're headed for this year.
I felt like it's been the, 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 some of it, you know, you know, it's, we haven't closed the gap on.
So Teresa, you'll send an email out to get a workshop session scheduled?
Yeah.
Next week, not here.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
Next week's talk. Dave, do you have anything?
I'll keep it brief. It's not words permitted, it's the value and the speech, right? So I had a really good conversation with both the Genoa police, the deputy chief of police, had a great walkthrough of their facility. Think the, the layout would be something that the city here, you know, I'll share with not only the facilities committee, but then the rest of council as well. Shared those, those blueprints or the schematics at least. The Mount Vernon chief, they're in process, they're not in their building or they're not in that process yet, but the financial pathways would be very pertinent to what we're looking for. I'll share that update as well. Had a great conversation with the leaders of the American Legion here in town. They're asking most likely to be on the agenda for next week, or not next, not next week, but the next council meeting. They'll reach out to you, Teresa, for confirmation. And fireworks planning, great start so far, a little bit slow out of gate, but again, the organization between myself, the American Legion, Greater Johnstown Parks, downtown Johnstown has been very quick to get things into pace. We have locked in our primary seven food vendors, same vendors from last year, so we don't have an incredible amount of overlap when it comes down to their offerings. So all the vendors that were there last year will be there again this year. We're starting to finalize the finances. We did see a 50% increase in just the expense of the fireworks alone. So the money that was given would have covered last year's, but does not cover this year's from the city perspective. But again, through some fundraising efforts, we've been able to close that gap mostly. Trying to work on the final bows on that piece as well. Got some great partnership with local waste services, so they're contributing their dumpster plus an additional monetary impact as well. We're looking for, and we are actually expanding and starting some initial conversations, public engagement, interaction, trying to find some enriching and, you know, entertaining activities that will go along with everything that's going on with the stage, hopefully use a little, a little bit of the school ground, green space as well, and make it a longer, more engaging event for not only for Johnstown, but again, surrounding communities as well. So that is all I have.
I have a question for Mr. Seeland on fireworks. I feel like I've brought it up before, but in the past couple of years, the shells, when they explode, which is nothing more than very thick cardboard, end up on the lower football soccer field and as well as the field next to a Chambers outfield area. Yes, there's a cleanup, but in my humble opinion, where I spend a lot of time out there, it is, it is, it is lacking, that it needs more attention because there'll be chunks of round cardboard out of the six-inch shells that is about an inch thick all over the place still. I don't know whose responsibility it is, but it needs to be a better job on those areas because during that time of year, games and, and practices are, are still going on. And then the after effect is, is that in the fall, when soccer, tackle football and flag football are out there, what you'll see is, because it's a thick compressed cardboard, some kid will inevitably land on it with a knee and it's a, it's a hard surface and it's, it's more than just an ouchie, it becomes an injury.
Yep. And definitely number one, volunteers to help clean up, we're definitely soliciting that as well. But again, that's part of the key, the, the relationship with local waste services. They're bringing, it's been confirmed, they're bringing a incentive to some groups that we're working on, the parameters for what they would need to meet as far as being eligible to be one of those groups, to receive those incentives, to be part of that cleanup.
So just so I'm clear, that's a picking up with your hand and putting it in the trash can.
Yeah, in the past, it was volunteers, just a couple of, but they, they're going to have a financial incentive to pick up and get it all cleaned up this year.
I think Mr. Barr just wants a little oversight, a post-cleanup check. Not all trash picker-uppers are the same.
And, and that, and that, that will go hand in hand with JYA's, make sure that, 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 that group that manages it focuses, because the, the trash, the french fries, the nacho trays, all that kind of stuff that's going to go on, that most, most of that cleanup is going to be up by the school. The focus of the cleanup of the day after, the small crew through that piece, because again, that, that day group will be focusing on the, the school property, but then the after, the after, the morning after group probably be focusing more on the areas that you discussed. Because the day group would have taken care of the bulk of the activities.
My experience tells me it's usually the latter that gets the less attention and the less.
We will hold them to the same standard.
And, and when I say that there is injury, you know, a piece of plastic container holding french fries in the stands, which the school wants it cleaned up, they don't want the unsightlyness of it, and, and I can't stress enough that those cardboard discs create injury is, in my opinion, and I think most would say are far more important than what have you not. So if there's an A-team cleanup, I would like to see them on the football field and, and baseball field on that.
Do you have a suggestion for the A-team cleanup?
I, I, I don't coordinate that.
I have a captain.
Last, last council meeting, I saw your hand shoot up pretty quick when I talk about incentives.
I, I don't have a problem being out there to help with the cleanup and say thumbs up, it meets satisfaction or not. I got a ton of experience in that and even volunteering to clean it up, but is there an A-team to clean it up? I could potentially look into that.
Wow, don't eat more cheese, I need more Indians.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, and that's what I'm asking for. Thank you, sir.
Sean? Ms. Hollis?
Okay, so Tiffany and I have been doing a lot of talking, working, to try to figure out. So the plan is tomorrow, there is a meeting between the Monroe Township and the school district. Monroe Township will send one individual, the school district is either sending one or two, and the city is to send three. We've had many conversations on who should go, what the purpose of this meeting is. Did you want to add anything with that?
No, I think you covered it.
Our thought is that it needs to have a very strong financial background on there, so members from finance to attend this first meeting because a lot of it's going to be based on finances. I also think having Ms. Hollis there be part of it would be also a, a benefit with the relationship with the trustees. So I think our thought process was Tiffany, myself, and Bob to attend this first meeting. Thoughts on that?
Given one day's notice, I'm, I'm good.
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is, is that this is not a fixed committee, this is something that can move.
This is just a, yeah, this is just.
It's a one-off, we can rotate in and out as different things come up.
We did talk about that, and that would be my, I would hope that that would be the case.
It might just be a one-time thing, it might be two times, three times, we don't know yet, so. It might just be a one-time thing, it might be two times, three times, we don't know yet, so.
When are we meeting tomorrow?
About five or five thirty, Sean?
You have two people on finance committee. Should somebody from, instead of two people from finance committee, should there be one from finance, Ms. Hollis, I understand, and somebody from safety and service?
No, I, we, we both believe having multiple people from finance, because it's going to be very high-depth, we think, finance discussions.
And the discussion is regarding, I mean.
It's going to be JEDs, NCA's, how all those mechanisms work.
I'm sure there'll be open topics too. My, my understanding is the idea is to uh look at how we interact together, look at ways we can improve, look at sticky points, and, you know, continue those conversations in a less formal environment. Uh, and obviously details, but a little bit of relationship building potentially, and see how it goes.
It also does or doesn't include water sewer discussion, or it does?
I guess it could go wherever. I don't think there's an agenda, I haven't seen an agenda.
There's no agenda at this point.
I mean, I think as we discuss annexation or JEDs, or you know what areas we identify as, you know, potential areas for those things, and the impact that it would have on the schools, surely water and sewer is going to pop up. I don't think that it's going to be the, I don't think there would be any um definitive decisions made. It's kind of just a reduction to see where we're all at. And then I would hope that we would come back, and then three different people would go, you know, we, so we get input. Honestly, I would like to just meet in a field somewhere, everybody at one time and just hash it out.
Tiffany's idea got banished from the lawyers, so. Her idea was, let's just meet, beer, pizza, and just everybody talk it out, but that's illegal for them.
Um, as long as there's a report that you come back, like any of the other committees, and we just get a report of everything that happened.
Yeah, but I think what, I think what could happen is, you know, as part of the work, the work session with council, again, we're trying to maintain some level of, you know, discretion here as well.
Here's what I don't want to do, is commit to something that the group hasn't agreed to.
Oh, we, yeah, one hundred percent.
So if we would say, yes, we're going to report back, that might change the, the interaction in the meeting. You know, I, what I wanted, what I really want it to be is a, a bonding, you know.
Kind of brainstorming.
Working through universal challenges to be a discussion starter. Uh, but if, if there's caveats that this council puts on it, I mean, if I'm there, I will obviously follow what the group
Yeah.
uh directs.
Like, this is the first in a series of these.
Maybe, this is, this is really a, you know, throw it against the wall, see what hap, see if it's productive and positive.
Okay.
Before I make a comment, Ms. Monroe, I felt like you were going to ask or say something.
I was going to say, there is not an established committee, it's not a quorum of council.
Right.
So it's not a public meeting.
And what is the um what is the, if any, implications of a report after the fact that's distributed to all of council?
There wouldn't be one, unless one of, somebody that's going wants to put something together.
It becomes public record, though.
Yeah. The idea from the trustees was they didn't want to be hindered by having an open meeting, and it everyone just having so many voices there, just having a very limited group.
If there's not a quorum of the township or the school board, I mean, it's.
Our initial thought was to have all, everybody, but.
If you have everybody, then it's a joint meeting.
Right, and they didn't want to do that, so.
I get it, I just want everybody on council just to be kept up to date, that's, that's all I'm asking for.
That's fair.
Yeah, but.
We can send an email on Thursday.
Not having quorum, you can freely talk about a bunch of things. But then, if you talk about a bunch of things, and then you make a report, it becomes public record. And I'm not trying to run around kind of things, but to my understanding, I felt like that the meeting focused more on water and sewer than anything else. Am I wrong?
Yeah, it's, it's about just everything, from.
No, my question is, is that I've, I've, I was under the impression that tomorrow's meeting, because I'm on the email chain and talking with other local elected people, that the primary focus was about water and sewer.
I thought it was about JEDs and annexation.
Uh, that's why I'm asking for clarity.
Tiffany, what's your view?
And I think when we orig, uh, sorry, initially reached out, it was to kind of identify and just work together on, you know, um kind of acknowledging the township's comprehensive plan, where it fits into ours, where ours fits into theirs, identify areas where we can work together. Um, hopefully, work together. That was my thought process anyways, on, you know, when I re, wanted to do it, which.
I'm, I'm not trying to be a stalwart on it, you're, you're comfortable with the three persons? Because rotating in and out can also be problematic in itself at times, rather than have continuity.
If the intent is to come out of those meetings with a specific course of action, yes, but we would want to, we would want to have those discussions in the public eye.
Right, but what I'm wanting to say, what I am saying, from my perspective, is that whatever three, whatever three it is, that rotating people in and out does not provide continuity and consistency of the spirit of working through things. It's much easier for three township trustees to discuss and communicate, especially when two are related to one another, versus moving different persons on council, because then you, you're always going to feel like you're catching up from the last meeting, or not being able to read the room in some aspect.
Well, let's, uh, should we just see how tomorrow's meeting go, and then brief council on it and figure out where to go from there?
I'm indifferent to going, so if you think there's someone else that would be a better fit.
I'm, I'm with this.
Completely.
I'm indifferent if I go.
I'm, I'm.
Is there someone you feel that would be better to, to attend?
I'm not, not saying that at all.
Okay.
Not, I, I, I just.
He's being strong and being the devil's advocate.
Right, well, I can jump in with some clarification, if you want, from, from the email chains that I've read, if.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the first email went out from us to the township trustees. The city would like to propose a joint meeting to discuss items related to economic development strategies related to existing or future projects. So this, just for background, I think this kind of started from a JED proposal specifically, um, with, with a specific property, and your review of that JED, and then our response to that JED, and then they wanted to have some discussion, um, they got our feedback, obviously, relative to the JED, uh, and what our proposal was then to the property owner. And so I think they wanted to sit down, from my understanding, and talk about what you see as far as expansions, projects, economic development, development. What they see is development, expansions, revenues. I think some of the conversations is going to be revolving around the, if, if an annexation were to occur, what are the financial implications to them, what are the financial implications to us? If, if a JED were to occur, what are the financial implications to, to the city? Uh, what are the financial implications to, to the township? Um, is there a, is there a path that has everyone holding hands and working through that? Or, um, or is there a possibility where people meet in the middle? Um, but I think it was just trying to sit down, understand kind of what's in their mind, and then what's in your mind, and then relaying your concerns, then relaying their concerns, and then opening up a, a larger conversation. If, if they say, hey, we're, we're afraid that, you know, what you do here is, is going to make us hire fifty more, fire any of us guys. And you say, my God, that's not our intent, um, or maybe it is, and if we do so, obviously, we don't want to financially impact you in a, in a negative way. So I think it was just kind of a, a getting together from my interpretation of it. Woody came back, um, reading through the email chain. After discussing with the trustees, they would like to do a preliminary non-quorum meeting with council members, school board members, and township trustees. They think it makes sense to only include the elected decision-makers and no administrators or school district employees. Uh, so that would have myself, Dr. Wagner, and Woody, uh, outside of these conversations. I go back to Jeff's point, Jeff's wanting normal processes in a normal, organized way. If you have administrators there, typically, you all channel your, your thoughts, your goals through the administrator. Uh, we act on your behalf, um, and I'm not advocating to be there, obviously, I think the, the initial meeting needs to be with you all, but uh, but from a conduit for you to reach out to, to get further information about how the meeting went, as an individual council member. Typically, I would be that conduit, or Phil would be that conduit, or Woody would be that conduit. Um, maybe in the future, that happens, maybe it doesn't, whatever your comfortability was, so. That's my general sense of it, hopefully I didn't miss the mark. I don't know if that helps or confuses the situation even more, and I'll step back now.
I'm, I'm with Mr. Green that you guys are all intelligent people, just whichever of the three of you is going to send out a report, um, uh, a summary of, and ob, obviously, we know that there's no decision-making, and I appreciate the conversation of this, but when we have these um things, um. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't know what I'm trying to say right now, I'm a bit lost for words, but I, I'm, I'm not trying to advocate for myself or anybody else to be part of the three person. Um, but after that initial meeting and that report, the, the report should bring all of us up to speeds, pretty much on the same page. And, and I, I believe that that's going to continue, where there's not um city manager, or township trustee kind of thing, or school board superintendent, that from my perspective, it's, it's, it should be the same people, so that it has some continuity, that as things gain momentum or support, um because, because you'll hear all the intricacies, whereas the others are, are, are going to hit the hundred thousand foot view. So just please make sure you're doing your due diligence of, of keeping informed, is that I ask in a, in a succinct report. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Will do.
Is, is that going to be our format?
Yeah, I mean.
I would like to step back, that I think the, the meeting loses complete value.
If it's the same people?
Yeah, because my belief is that it's, it's a relationship-building one, not necessarily a activity-generating one. That's the way I think it should be.
Well, I'm, I'm open to either, I'm not saying I'm dying on the hill with that, because after the first meeting, you'll know, and if, if you're saying, hey, yeah, I think the next time it's appropriate for three different persons to go, I'm cool with that too. But if you come back and say, hey, Jeff, I think you're right, it needs to be the same three people for A, B, C, X, Y, Z, I'm okay with that too. You guys need to read the room in there, because only three can go. I, I, that's.
I'd say we just see how tomorrow goes, then go from there.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want you to step back, right? I'm, I'm not trying to stall it, or put a pin in it. I, I don't, I don't want to do that.
To push this along, Teresa, do they need to, since it's not a technical committee, there's no vote on this tonight, or?
There's no motion.
They're trying to decide amongst themselves.
Right, it's just, I think you guys decide, because it's not technically a committee, there's no silly nomination.
I'm okay with the three, to, 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 to make it, to make it clear.
Okay, okay, that's all I have for other business. Anybody else? Okay, I make a motion that we move to executive session to review collective bargaining strategy, include all of council members and the city manager. Uh, does anyone else over there need to attend? Sean, Dave?
Uh, Dave Delandy, Jack Liggett, and myself would be my recommended.
So to include all of council, the city manager, uh, Jack Liggett, and Dave Delandy, uh, for this collective bargaining strategy meeting. Um, no other business to follow afterwards.
Tag it.
Here, Don Parker.
Sure, oh, go ahead. Okay, we, we got to vote real quick.
Did you get it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Wes Cobble.
Yes.
Jeff Bar.
Yes.
Bob Rancini.
Yes.
Dave Seeland.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Tiffany Hollis.
Yes.
Yes, sir.